I took one of those Dexter tree back in the eighties. That's what I was like going, huh?
All right. I'll call this. Let me get the mic.
All right. Well, if you all would join with me, I would like to invite Pastor Kason Oaks to come up to the podium and give us our invitation.
Thank you for your invitation. Would you stand with me and bow your heads? Lord, we're grateful for an opportunity to evoke your name. Thank you for the city of Guyman and these council members that would allow space for a prayer, a prayer to our heavenly Father. And as we turn our attention to heaven, just for a brief moment, Lord, we look to you for wisdom. We know that you are the Creator and sustainer of our lives. And being the Creator that created us in your image, to reflect your image, we know that we are created to create, to be creative. God, we ask your wisdom to do good for the folks of Guyman, for our members, for those that call Guyman home. God, I pray that you would help us navigate through treacherous waters, Lord, moments and times of war that it seems like that continues to be rumors of that, Lord. We pray for peace. We also want to thank you for the sacred ground in which that you have so providentially allowed us to be in. Lord, I pray that there would be blessings upon Guyman, because we'll be able, ever grateful for the blessings that you've given us. And I pray that we continue to look to you for strength. God, I pray that you would help us, sustain us in the midst of our weaknesses. Let us continue to be humble. Let us continue to look to you for that wisdom and strength, God. Lord, we, again, we want to pray blessings. We ask blessings upon the city council, Lord, and that they would be mindful of those that have a hard time providing for themselves. I pray that our heart continues to seek after what your heart is for as well. Let us continue to love you with all of our strength, our mind, our being, and our neighbors as ourself. And it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Raisin, would you lead us in the plate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't have a gavel, but I'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number one is attendance roll call.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Alvedres.
Present.
Mr. Setzer. Ms. Sanchez. Mr. Idson.
Here.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay. Agenda item number two is public comments. Does anybody have any public comments tonight? Anybody have any public comments? And by the way, did everybody sign in when you came in, so that Diane's got a good record of everybody's here? Okay, no public comments. We'll move on. Agenda item number three is approval of the minutes of the 9/12/23 regular meeting. Oh, that's in the consent agenda. Wait, I just, I don't have my computer.
Are you on the Guyman Utilities Authority agenda?
No, we're on the, we're on the city. I was going off my phone, Diane.
Oh, okay.
So my, the charger finally kicked in over here. Okay. Agenda item number four is approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda, item four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Okay. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number three for fund number oh-one, the general fund, for an increase of $90,688.
You'll, you'll see in the budget, and you're probably getting a couple more of these in November and December, as it draws into the end of the year. We just underestimated, basically, senior attorney office supplies, administration expenses, some capital outlay and OPSU. Capital outlay is some of the buildings we inherited, and we didn't know that we was going to have to spend quite that much money. Administration charges are just some, we've added some personnel, so we needed to do, you know, some desks and chairs. Office supplies per self-explanatory, city attorney underestimated that just a little bit, so, yeah. We're just going to have to, and fortunately enough, we have the money to go ahead and put it in the account, and we can get it spent.
Questions, discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment number three, fund zero-one, $90,688, item five.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number one for fund sixteen, the Guyman Development Fund, for an increase of $65,187. Pretty much the same story.
Pretty well the same story. Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve budget amendment number one, fund sixteen, for $65,187, item six.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number two for fund eighteen, the library fund, for an increase of $10,000.
This is not like the other. I didn't think it was. We was gifted by Equity Bank $10,000 for the library, and we want to take this time to thank Equity Bank for participating for that, and do you'd like to make any comments? Yeah, howdy, girl.
She's got a whole bag full.
Yeah. State your name.
Yeah. Who are you?
Where you come from? So Equity Bank donated $10,000 to the library, which was really neat, because we had been trying to purchase these steam-to-go kits that we can check out from the library to the public, to the schoolteachers. We can use them in our storytime. And I had been starting a list on Amazon to see if I could go ahead and try to purchase all of the pieces without having to purchase the kits themselves. Well, with this $10,000 donation, didn't have to worry about that. We were able to purchase all 55 steam-to-go kits. We are in the process of putting them into the catalog, processing them, and they should be out hopefully by the end of next month. So if you want to see what they look like...
Hmm.
There you go. Each kit has a book that goes along with the theme, and the theme for this one is "Examine Science and Nature" kit. So they have a book, and then they have little learning toys. So this one has a science trivia challenge with cards that ask different science questions. And... A little handheld telescope, not telescope, microscope, with prepared slides that you can use with it. So yes, we're very thankful for that, and that's what we're going to do with it.
How many, how many of these kits?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And they, everything from math to science to some technology stuff, phonics. It just runs the gamma to different learning toys and activities.
Great.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to budget amendment number two for the fund of eight, or fund eighteen, for an increase of $10,000.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number one for fund forty-four, which Sales Tax General CIF Fund, for an increase of $98,631.
Mayor, you'll see where we can miss it, or I guess didn't get the right numbers, but we got them now. We paid off City Hall. It's completely paid off, and it's the city of Guyman's now. And, and the debt service on the new library, we, I'll just say, we just misfigured that, so we needed to add that to that, so this last budget says.
All right. Do I have any questions, motion?
This is getting everything ready for next year's budget.
That is, yes, sir.
Getting everything prepped up and ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. Make a motion that we approve budget amendment one for fund forty-four, Sales Tax General CIF Fund, increase $98,631, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen, a resolution amending aircraft fuel flow charge administration. Details are attached.
Just the resolution, when our FBO, our fixed-based operator out there sells fuel, we get five cents per gallon, basically goes in maintenance of the tanks and stuff like that out there.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen, resolution amending aircraft fuel flow charge administration, item nine.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number ten is discussion and possible action to approve pay request number three, in the amount of $3,006, $306,878, to United Golf LLC for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project. That's pay request number three.
I might just add on that, Mayor, that there'll be one more, be the final. They are practically done. There's just a couple of little items they need to come back and do. It's supposed to be there next week. They're setting up the weather station that monitors the weather, that tells the sprinklers it's everything, so we'll be having a final on it probably the next meeting.
Good.
I, uh, go ahead. You mean, are they connecting the weather station, like if it rains, the sprinklers don't turn on?
That's right.
Yeah.
And it measures the humidity out into just what type of water, how much water it needs to go on, so.
Surgeons playing, it keeps track of bogies?
Devils. Mr. Shannon, is, are we still, I know a lot of this project was funded with generous donations, and we appreciate that, obviously. Do we still have a grant that's out there that we, we applied for that hasn't been awarded? Is that correct?
That is correct. Something that's hung up in the federal system for some reason, so we just had personnel check on that probably about three weeks ago. It's still pending, so I don't, I don't know what the holdup is.
Okay. If that were to come true and we were to get that, that's not a matching grant, is it?
Oh, no, no.
That's not a matching grant, but it was, it was quite a, quite an amount, though, wasn't it? We talking, was it $250,000?
It was $250,000.
Well, hopefully we get an answer soon on that, and...
I'd hope so.
And once again, thanks, I mean, we know when we first started this, we were thankful with all the donations that went towards this project, and you, you can name some of them if you, well, the main one? No? Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, it was just, thank you very much, and then...
I might just add the Nance Foundation also, but what's most important about this whole project is it's, it's saving water. That's, I mean, a lot of people look...
It's part of a water conservation effort.
Oh, it's, 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 it's all it is, and yes, it's at the golf course, but it needs water, but I, I just going out on a limb, we'll probably save 40% of the water usage out there.
Be fun to watch the electric bill on the well.
Oh, yeah. And the gallons, yeah, you know, we, there's a meter on that well, and so it'll make, it'll make a huge difference.
It'd be good to see a graph, bless you, a graph from like when we first, well, a year, take it a year back, take it to, heck, we could take it to 2022, right? 2021, possibly?
Oh.
We could take it back quite a bit.
Oh, yeah, we could take it back.
See the water usage over time, along with electrical, you know, people, I like graphs. I like graphs, so maybe we could do something like that. That way we could present it and have some, have some backing, along with all the expertise that was brought into this project, as far as the consulting. Just, just added, some added, added documentation.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve request number three in the amount of $306,878.50 to United Golf LLC, Sunset Hills Golf Irrigation Project, item ten.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number eleven is discuss, discussion and possible action to approve the contract for processing Medicaid Cost Recovery Services, GEMT funding between the city of Guyman and Medicambs.
Just their yearly contract that they take care of all the collections. Very much needed.
I make a motion we approve contract for processing Medicaid Cost Recovery Services, GEMT, between the city of Guyman and Medicambs, item eleven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number twelve is discussion and possible action to approve fire alarm specialist maintenance agreement for Guyman City Hall, the Guyman Public Library, and the Ed and Mary Nash Animal Shelter. Agreement is attached. Is this the same one we've dealt with last year?
That is correct, yes, sir. This is, this is corrected as any municipality. We can just enter into one-year agreement. Come across the last years, and it was for two years, so we've corrected it, so.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Petty.
Any questions? Discussion, motion?
Make a motion to approve fire alarm specialist maintenance agreement for the Guyman City Hall, the Guyman Public Library, and the Ed and Mary Nash Animal Shelter.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number thirteen is discussion and possible action to approve clinical experience agreement between the Guyman Fire Department, ambulance, and Southwest Medical Center.
Mayor, just remember, last meeting, we entered into agreement with the Memorial Hospital of Texas County. Allows our EMT paramedics to do clinicals at both facilities now. They're in liberal and here in Guyman.
Good. Any discussion, motion?
Make a motion to approve clinical experience agreements between Guyman Fire Department, ambulance, and Southwest Medical Center.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number fourteen is discussion and possible action to approve the submission of a letter of intent to apply for the 2023 Oklahoma opioid abatement grant. Staff letter, in letter of intent, is that...
Mayor, huge, huge lawsuit against pharmaceuticals, and this is, there's a grant that we can apply for to help teach people the dangers, and so we might as well go after it. It's, it's good money, and people just need to be educated on the opioids. And Guyman was selected out of, oh, we was in the top five communities that the Attorney General's office, they gave his recommendation for us to participate in that, so it's a big deal.
Nothing to brag about, but it's...
Yeah, it's huge.
So this is a educational experience?
Yes, for prevention.
So how will that go upon, like?
It'll probably be administered through the police department.
Any other discussion, motion, questions?
Possibly. Make a motion that we approve the submission of a letter of intent to apply for the 2023 Oklahoma opioid abatement grant, item fourteen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number fifteen is discussion and possible action to approve the Oklahoma Public Transit Revolving Fund between the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and City of Guyman for 2024 operating funds. This is just the yearly deal, isn't it?
That's correct. Help subsidize the transit system, the bus, the ride.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the Oklahoma Public Transit Revolving Fund between the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and the city of Guyman for 2024 operating funds, item fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number sixteen is discussion and possible action to approve section 5311, title, six policy for the funding year 2024 for the ride. And that goes right along with this.
That is correct, yes.
Any questions, motion?
I make a motion that we approve section 5311, title. That would be a four, wouldn't it? No, six. Policy for funding year 2024, the ride, sixteen.
Second.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
That would be on the other side. Yeah, I'd be, give me a...
Agenda item number seventeen is discussion and possible action to approve the order of determination for trash, weeds, and grass located at Lot One and Lot Two of Block 21 of the Latham Edition of Guyman, Oklahoma, Texas County, Oklahoma, also known as 902 South Cremley. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. So, um, this one, same thing as all the other ones. We followed our procedure the way that we needed to, as far as we gave them the courtesy 10-day notice, the notice to clean property, having got anything back from the owners, no contact, so we did proceed to do the hearing, and they failed to attend. So we were hoping that we could start the bid process on that, and our estimated cost for the work would be about $1,000. And the estimated start date to clean the property would be December 13th to the 21st.
Okay.
Hang on, you said December?
December, yes.
Because you, we got to go out for bids, that's part of it.
Yes, so the bid process...
So it says the estimate and start date, clean property, October 11th.
Yeah, there's a new one. I'm not sure if she put it on there, if you guys want the updated commentary for that, but I did update that.
Okay, just checking.
Yes.
Any questions, discussion?
And we did not make contact with the owner, property?
Um, so usually what we try our best to do is go on the utility bill. However, in this instance, there was, there's no utilities connected, and they have no contact information since the last owner, so no contact so far.
It's not a unique situation with a lot of towns, though, because people will move or inherit property and just quit taking care of it, and...
Yes, and this owner's address is actually here in the city, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure why they haven't gotten in contact, but I have no number for the, these people. We did post on the property, send out everything like we needed to do, post on the newspapers, so, yes.
I make a motion that we approve order of determination, trash, weeds, grass located Lot One and Two, Block 21, Latham Edition, Guyman, 73942, Texas, Oklahoma. Texas County, Oklahoma, AKA 902 South Cremley, item seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eighteen is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for trash, weeds, and grass located at the Nance Edition, north 30 feet of, east 123 feet of Lot Seven, east 123 feet of Lot Eight, west 80 feet of, the south 13.5 feet of Lot Eight, Block 22, also known as 116 Northeast Street.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, and you? So I have a property that I was initially brought to my attention for some issues with sewer, and they were able to repair that. When I initially made contact with the owner, we had mentioned the cleaning up of trash in the property, and this property has been abated previously to clean up some of the trash that is present right now. I did go by and give my 10-day notice and my notice to clean, which that returned to me in the mail, went ahead and sent the notice of hearing that was received by the owner. No intent, they failed to attend the hearing, and that's why I'm presenting it. I would like to recommend for approving order determination, we would like to start the bid process. Estimated cost would be about $1,000. Work to be completed from December 13th to December 20th.
This, this has been, I know that, I was here when we did the first one. How many times have we done this with these...
I believe this is the second time.
It's the third.
Third?
Third.
Okay.
I was thinking it's at least three.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve order of determination for trash, weeds, and grass located at Nance, AKA 116 Northeast Street, item eighteen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no new business, so we will go to the Guyman Utilities Authority. So I'll call this meeting to order. We've already done number ones and number two. Number four, number, agenda item number five, we've already done. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number one for fund sixty-five, the Guyman Utilities... Fund 65, the Guyman Utility Authority, for an increase.
Mayor?
Of this.
We need to do four.
We need to approve the minutes.
Oh, we gotta approve that, okay.
Yeah, that's a different minute.
Okay, agenda item number four is approve the minutes of the 91223 regular meeting.
Make a motion that we approve minutes of the 91223 regular meeting, item four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve the budget amendment number one for Fund 65, the Guyman Utility Authority, for an increase of $41,509.
Similar to what happened in the city there, yes, sir. You'll see some fuel cost, unexpected professional services and some capital outlay due to, uh, again, buildings that we acquired this past year.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment number one for the Fund 65, Guyman Utility Authority, an increase of $41,509, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve, approve invoice number 139426 in the amount of $159,036 to Ardua for the Guyman Ogallala Study. Invoice is attached.
Yeah, it's the last invoice, basically, when, uh, they did all the data reporting and, and they did find water, so we're, this is part of, phase one is complete since this is paid, so.
Make a motion that we approve invoice number 139426, the amount of $159,036 to Ardua for the Guyman Ogallala Study, item six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to approve change order number one for an increase of $13,665.75 to Caldwell Tanks Incorporated for the Elevate, Elevated Spheroid Tank Project.
This is an increase, uh, when we got out on the job site, like any other job site, uh, we found some, uh, water lines, main lines, uh, telecommunications lines we had to move around, so that's what it caused. Unexpected.
We did get it moved around?
Got it moved around and in the ground, so everything's good.
Make a motion and change order number one for an increase of $13,665.75 to Caldwell Tanks Inc. for elevating spear void tanks projects?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve application for payment number two for Gates Utilities LLC in the amount of $194,721.77 for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project. Application engineer's update is attached. Any questions? Or motion?
Payment number two of, does it say on there?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve, that we approve application for payment number two for Gates Utility, Utilities LLC, the amount of $194,721.77 for the North, Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to reapprove change order number two from Utility Technology Services Incorporated on the AMI project for an increase of $4,797.30.
These were items, uh, the next two were tabled. We had some discrepancy in their invoices. We got all that straightened out. Everybody's in agreeance, uh, to the increase to $4,797.30.
I make a motion to reapprove change order number two from Utility Technology Services Inc. on the AMI project for an increase of $4,797.30, item nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action to approve change order number three for an increase of $3,515.03 to UTS for additional materials for the gas installs for the AMI project. Same deal?
Same deal. It was tabled from the last time and, uh, again, we're, we, we found the problem and, uh, they agreed to it, so that's what they, they've come up with, so, on the change order.
Make a motion and change order number three for an increase of $3,515.03 to UTS for additional materials for gas installs for the AMI project.
Second.
Have, have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion and possible action to authorize ORF-271 dispersment request number four final in the amount of $4,000, $409,997.90 for the ORF-21-0035-CW note, the AMR project, upon approval and receipt of funds from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board to remit the payment due to Utility Technology Services Incorporated.
Brings that project to a close.
Doesn't seem that long ago.
It's been two, three years.
Yes, it is.
Or longer.
Due respect, uh, yeah.
So I've got a, so how, have, are we, are we, are we online with the, with the meters now?
Oh, there, there's about 300 meters out there that we're dealing with, that, uh, that, uh, supply chain issue still, especially in your bigger water meters and gas meters, but, uh, they'll be taking care of those at a later time.
We're done, ready to roll. Any questions, comments, motion?
Nope, this, this is good for the community.
Yeah, right.
For sure, infrastructure-wise. With that, I, uh, authorize, I make a motion to authorize ORF-271 dispersment request number four final in the amount of $409,997.90 for the ORF-210035 CW note, upon approval and receipt of funds from the Oklahoma Water Resource, Resource Board, remit, payment due to Utility Technology Services Inc., item 11.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Okay, we have no business, so we'll adjourn as the Guyman Utilities Authority and we're going to readjourn, readjourn as the Guyman Airport Authority. Uh, we'll go back. Agenda item number three, anybody changed their mind, want to do any public comments tonight? Okay. Agenda item number four is approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 9th, 2023?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes, special meeting, May 9th, 2023, item four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve the airport layout plan, narrative sections one through four, as recommended by the Guymans Airport Board.
Mayor, anytime one uses the federal money through the FAA, it's always best to have a plan, uh, and this is a very detailed plan. As the federal government, when they start looking at, uh, the monies that we could be receiving the next four to five years, uh, we just all need to be on the same page. Uh, we, we found some things that we're going to have to fix out there, there's some encroachments on some, I call it free space, but, uh, they're easy fixes, so we'll be able to get all that done and, uh, uh, when it comes time to, uh, get some major funding, all our i's are dotted and t's crossed, so this will put us on a level playing field where we can start getting some pretty good-sized money from the, uh, feds, so. We did find some problems. Small problems. Chainsaw will take care of most of it.
Make a motion that we approve the airport layout plan, narrative sections one dash four is recommended by Guymans Airport Board, item five.
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Heitzen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Agenda item number six is reports from the city manager and council members. Mr. Shannon?
It's been an interesting month, for sure. It, this year's, uh, just slipped right by. We're three-fourths away through the year. Uh, we're at 75% of our expenditures and revenue and we're staying within, uh, the 2023 budget, which is always a pleasant thing to do. Even though we did have to transfer some money around, we still had the money. And so with that, our revenues are, uh, excuse me, our, our sales tax has been down just a little bit, but in talking to other communities, uh, everybody's experiencing the same thing right now and, uh, it's, it's still kind of surprised me a little bit, but, uh, they're down a little bit. Uh, going back to just what we just passed and the Guyman Utilities Authority, uh, the, uh, the new water meters, uh, we've seen an increase in Guyman Utilities. I mean, every little drop that water goes through, the water meter now is measured and, uh, so we're recouping some costs there, so, uh, things look good. Uh, we, we start our budget hearings next week with the Department Eds and, uh, I'm anxious to, uh, see the next couple of weeks how that comes out, so. It looks good. As, as we was talking prior to the meeting, they started the project on Highway 54. We've had a little bit of concerns, but, uh, nothing that, uh, a phone call to the Department of Transportation or the contractor, they're real easy to work with so far. Uh, hadn't heard anything, I don't think any police department here, but I, I don't think we had any, we hadn't any wrecks or anything like that and, and that's a good positive thing. I'm sure there's a lot of traffic coming through Guyman, once you see it in just two lanes. Wow. A lot of traffic comes through Guyman. Uh, with that, uh, I did touch a little bit on the water project. Excuse me. Uh, we're about ready to, you know, we got, we got the authority to advertise for, um, for our, uh, test wells and we should get that package put together and get that out so we can start punching holes in the ground and making sure there is good quality of water, so. Things look good.
Good. Mr. Alvedres?
I know that today's meeting, um, I got some calls from the agenda items. There were some concerns of money. Sorry. Got some calls about some concerned, uh, citizens about going through the agendas and, and all the money outgoing, you know, spending and so forth. I just, I, I want to make the public aware that these are, most of these are budget items. They're, they're budgeted. Uh, we, our staff, city manager and the staff, they, they go through it, they find, come, they, they go through it and it's all, it's all part of the budget. Um, I understand of the, the concerns of, of the expenditures and, um, whether it be capital or utility or infrastructure, it's, it's, it's all budgeted. So if you have any questions, uh, feel free to, to give any council, uh, member a call or the city manager's door is, uh, is always open. So that's all I have.
Jason?
I just want to give a, uh, kudos to the fire department and EMTs. Uh, we had an interesting call on our block last night and I guess someone had a fire pit going or whatever and smoked another person's house out and the call went in and they all organized and got there pretty quickly. So it was kind of interesting to see them do their job firsthand.
Good. We're, we're lucky to have them.
Yes.
That it? Well, I don't really have anything to say tonight, except it is Roman numeral six.
It is. I changed.
Yeah, I know.
I was confused.
Okay. With that, thank everybody for coming. We are adjourned.